Thank you. The clerk will take the roll.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Here.
Commissioner Bastad.
Here.
Commissioner Reinert.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Jepson.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
And we're all here this morning. We will make us, just addition to the agenda, the Management Committee, which we just got done with, will be item 7E. Just for information, you have the agenda at your, at the table in front of you. Item number four is to consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 and the purchase card claims paid for the period ending March 7th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bastad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
This is unanimously. Item number five is the approval of minutes from the March 11th, 2025 County Board Meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Heinrich. Are there any changes? additions? Nothing? Good. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Moving down to Chairs' remarks. Before we jump into the rest of the agenda, I want to take a moment to invite all our seniors and their families to Anoka County's Senior Expo on Saturday, April 5th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at Lord of Life Church in Ramsey. As our senior population continues to grow, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, by 2031, in five Americans will be 65 or older. Events like this are more important than ever. I looked down this row of seven of us. I think I'm the only one over 65, but they gave me this to read. No, just kidding. This expo is a great opportunity to connect with local resources, enjoy a free pancake breakfast, and we've enjoyed many of those. Get a blood pressure check or mini massage, and even catch a performance by Todd Elvis Anderson. Plus, you can get your eyewear cleaned and repaired while you're there. The event is fully handicap accessible. We'd love to see you join us for a fun and informative morning. And April 5th is going to be a beautiful day. It'll be nice and warm, I'm sure. So come on out to Lord of Life Church in Ramsey for that event on April 5th. And we will move down into our committee medians. The first one is Government Operations. And let's get right down into this. We've got the Consent Agenda. We've got, what have we got? Six? Five different consent agenda things, so we'll start with that. We'll start with Property Records and Taxation, and Lead Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two items on your consent calendar. First is Resolution 2025 GO5, a resolution realigning split residential parcels pursuant to Minnesota statutes. That's in Commissioner Heinrich's district. Secondly, we have Contract C0011466 with Nearmap US for aerial imagery, including 2025 and 2026 flights and license agreement in the amount of $131,610.
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving down to Facilities Management, Commissioner Jepson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Facilities Management would like to offer two items under the Consent Agenda. The first item is kind of an exciting one, I think, in which Chief Services was successful in receiving $400,000 for accessibility upgrades to their leased space in the county-owned Blaine Human Services Building. This funding will cover the cost of upgrade to their restrooms, their production room, kitchen and lunchroom, common areas, and renovate the client day room, and all the spaces to be more accessible to the clients that they serve. Because of the laws of the state of Minnesota, this will be a direct payment to Anoka County, which was not included during the 2025 budget process. The second item is to approve Contract C0011458, which is for the completion of the 2025 Annual Parking Lot Pavement Maintenance Program with Minnesota Roadways for an amount not to exceed This is an, this is ongoing work that helps to ensure that our parking lots are properly repaired and maintained.
And then go down to Finance, Commissioner Jepson.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chair. Finance would like to offer one item on the Consent Agenda, which is to adopt the 2026 Budget Development Guidelines as we move into the 2026 budgeting process. The guidelines are included in the meeting packet, but I'd like to highlight just a few. A commitment to a county tax rate that plans for long-term competitiveness using sustainable revenue sources and operational efficiencies. Identify anticipated trends in community growth and financial resources and future operating needs, and ensure that key short-term fiscal targets are in line with long-term fiscal projections. And finally, to support the funding and implementation of this board's policies and goals respond to changing community conditions, concerns, and demands, and to do so in the most cost-effective manner. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I get a motion on the Consent Agenda, I just want to make sure that no one wants to remove anything from the Consent Agenda, those five items we'll vote on as together? Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Jepson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Bastad.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. We have a couple informational items on there. The committee received an update related to the 2025 property tax statements and 2026 valuation notices. And the committee also discussed the use of poll pads in countywide elections. There were comments from the public regarding this issue as well, and we'll be having more discussion, I believe, at a future GO meeting, Government Operations meeting, with more information coming our way then. Moving on to Human Services, Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee of the Whole, we did meet for a Human Services Committee on Tuesday, March 18th, at 8:30 in this building. There were no public comments in person. I did not receive any via email either, but anyone may at mandy.meisner@anokacounty.gov. So on our slate today is Consent Number One, Contract C0011455. This is with the Department of Economic and Employment and Economic Development, also known as DED. And this is to accept the Youth at Work Competitive Grant Program in the amount not to exceed $294,300. And if awarded for this project, the contract period will support state fiscal years 2026 through 2027, with contracts in place by July 1st of 2025. So this has been a program that has been in place for a long time, obviously focusing on our youth. I will make a note that, like many of our departments, the projection for funding is somewhat precarious, so we will see what we end up, but the projections of workforce in general for the job training and career force is about half of the budget. So I do just want to make that aware for education and transparency's sake. For number two, we have, under Social Services, the approval to amend State of Minnesota Emergency Services Program for grant funding, Contract C009814. This is for the Department of Human Services, the Homelessness Housing and Support Services to administer the Emergency Services Program Grant through June 30th, 2027, and increase the grant contract maximum to $1,860,000. And this is, has been awarded for a two-year extension to all of our current recipients of the Emergency Services Grant. The amendment will extend the terms of the agreement and provide an additional $465,000 for state fiscal year 2026 and $465,000 for the state fiscal year 2027, thus bringing it to the total amount that I mentioned earlier. For Action Item Number Three, this is to approve the Resolution 2025 HS-5. This is proclaiming April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Anoka County. So this is something that we would like to recognize. I just want to share a couple of status points for this. In 2025, Anoka County Children and Family Services served approximately 300 families with early intervention services. And some of our community partners include, but this is not the full list, Alexandra House, Anoka County Community Action Program, also known as ACAP, Head Start, Save Kids, Zero Abuse Project, Public Health and Social Services Employees, Conexus Energy, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota, and some other, also other community agencies. Again, this is about promoting and preventing child abuse and neglect. The last action item is under the Job Training Center. This is for Anoka County Community Action Program, also known as ACAP, Flexible Funding Contract, C0011454. And this is to request to accept the funds from ACAP to support job training programs. The total award for this amendment is $75,000 over a one-year period from April 1st, 2025, through March 31st, 2026. And with that, that completes everything on my slate. I will go ahead and move that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Meisner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jepson. Just for information, or just to check, does anybody wish to take anything off for a separate vote? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Bastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Informational items, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. I do always like to share the informational items with the public. We had a very comprehensive presentation. This was from Human Services around the Deficit Reduction Act. I'm sorry. This, this was not the robust presentation, but it was still a good presentation. This was about the Deficit Reduction Act of the 2025 Annual Report. I am just going to make a note right now that I noticed it says 2005 on this agenda, so it should say 2025.
It was 2005.
It was based off 2025. That was an initiative was started, and it's carried forward since then.
Okay.
This is the date of the act.
Thank you. Thank you. I stand corrected. Keep that. So again, this was something that we do talk about every year, and this is a, an act that was founded in 2005. The second informational item was a very comprehensive presentation, and this was from Economic Assistance, walking us through the Public Assistance Programs presentation. And so, you know, I'm not going to go through all of it. I will just, again, give my sincere gratitude for all the work that went into this presentation. I hope that we will continue to do this, in my opinion, every year, because there is so many things happening which affects countless people and families in Anoka County. So much appreciation for that. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. We'll move down to the PS, Public Safety Report, and Commissioner Bastad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Public Safety Committee met on Tuesday, March 11th, and we have five action items. The first is Resolution 2025-PS05. It's accepting a dedicated donation from the Anoka County Crime Prevention Coalition. This was in the amount of $4,000, and it is, helps support the Sheriff's Office Explorer Program. The next item is Resolution 2025 PS06, accepting dedicated donation from Scott Mel. Scott has done this in the past. He's very, very generous. And what he does is he donates new factory ammunition for our firearms training program for the Sheriff's Office. Number three is Resolution 2025 PS07, accepting dedicated donation from Brady's K-9 Fund. And this is a donation from Brady's K-9 Group of a jacket for one of our, our K-9 dogs. Very generous, very excited to get that and help protect one of our K-9 deputies. Item number four is Contract C0011359. This is the 2023 Emergency Management Performance Grant between the State of Minnesota Department of Public Safety and Anoka County Emergency Management in the amount of $141,481, in a term of January 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2025. And you will note that those dates seem like they are mostly in the past, which they are, and the state is just a little bit behind in getting us the grant dollars. But it is a grant that we've utilized in the past and will continue to do so. And then the new item, item number five, Contract C0011334, is an agreement with Everbridge for a staged implementation of an emergency notification system for a maximum amount This is a new system which will be utilized in our 911 dispatch office, and they will be phasing in the transition. And this will be a new public emergency notification system, and it will implement an internal mass communication systems for primary and secondary emergencies. The plan is to phase it in, in four phases, to utilize it to its best capacity, and make sure training and everything is really good on this. So it's really exciting.
Thank you. Anyone wish to remove any of these from the consent to vote separately?
I'll move approval.
Been moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Heinrich. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Bastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Any informational items, Commissioner Bastad?
We did get department updates, but I think it's exciting that we are getting very, very close to our 911 center opening. A lot of comments from the public about when is it going to happen? The building is beautiful, and we are very, very close. So it sounds like it should be happening in April. So we are crossing our fingers and excited to get our staff over there and utilizing that beautiful facility. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to Transportation. Commissioner Jepson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Transportation Committee met on Tuesday, March 18th, at 1:00 p.m. All Commissioners attended, and there was no public comment. There are six items on the Consent Agenda for the board to consider for approval today. The first two items on the agenda are Resolutions 2025 TR-10 and Resolution 2025 TR-11. Both involve the reconstruction of Sunset Avenue between Main Street and 109th Avenue or Apollo Drive, whether you're in the city of Blaine or Lionel Lakes. To facilitate the necessary road improvements, acquisition of additional right-of-way, permanent easements and/or temporary easements will be required. TR-10 authorizes the preparation of highway right-of-way plat, while TR-11 authorized the acquisition of that right-of-way described in the prepared plat. The third item on the Consent Agenda is to approve Resolution 2025 TR-12, authorizing the county to enter into Contract C0011032, which is a JPA with Mendat and the city of St. Francis for improvements along Trunk Highway 47 from 227th Avenue to Ambassador Boulevard in the city of St. Francis. The next Consent Agenda item is for the approval to enter into Contract C0011071, which is another JPA, but with the city of Fridley, for the pedestrian trail improvements at Bridge 02523, which is the ever-popular bridge over the BNSF Railway. If you can recall, we had a very large discussion at last, our last board meeting, and we awarded the contract for this reconstruction to begin. This JPA is with the city of Fridley, which outlines the costs and maintenance responsibilities for when the bridge is completed. The fifth item on the Consent Agenda is to approve entering into Contract C0011460, a professional services contract, but with Bolton &amp; Menck in the amount of $249,963.22 for preliminary engineering, environmental documentation, and final design services for the intersection improvements on Lake Drive at Kettle River Boulevard and Kettle River Boulevard at Camp 3 Road in the city of Columbus. Construction is scheduled to begin in 2027. The final Consent Agenda item is awarding Contract C0011476 in the amount, in the amount of $1,381,604.16 to Park Construction Company for signal reconstruction and pedestrian ramp improvements at the intersections of Northdale Boulevard, at 111th Lane, and 109th Avenue at University Avenue in the cities of Blaine and Coon Rapids. Construction is anticipated to begin this summer in 2025. And, Mr. Chair, that concludes the Consent Agenda items, which I will go ahead and move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jepson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reinert. I've got Commissioner Schulte, you had a comment, and then Commissioner Reinert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that St. Francis project and the cooperative agreement or the JPA with both St. Francis and Mendat. That section of highway is obviously a state highway. It's Mendat 47. But it was a dangerous stretch of highway. There was a couple of young ladies who were injured, critically injured. They're fine now. They've made a full recovery, but, but it was touch and go for a while. And it's a, it was a very wide stretch of highway where pedestrians were crossing, and it was an uncontrolled crossing. But the city of St. Francis was really proactive about getting some changes made there, and they worked diligently with the county and with the state to bring some changes about. It's been a long time coming, but it's a good thing we're doing something. And this is, this is going to be some big changes out there, and we're pleased it's happening. I want to thank Joe McPherson and the Anoka County Highway Department for doing this project and working with the state and St. Francis for doing this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Reinert.
I just want to make a couple of comments on the first two items for the redesign and construction of Sunset Avenue in my district. You know, that's a well-traveled pathway, and it's, also has a lot of residential around it. And so when we had our open house, there was a lot of concern about the design that was being represented. And so I just want to, if anybody's watching out there, all the hundreds of people that are watching our show today in my district, just want to let them know that we are working on, on some design updates, and it's my understanding that we'll be able to show something in about a month. Is that right? Okay. So just want to get that out there, because I have been contacted on this redesign and construction of a county road probably more than any other since I've been a commissioner. So keep the information rolling out there.
Thank you. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Bastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Informational items, Commissioner Jepson.
Yeah, in addition to corridor updates and project progress, we, the committee authorized the county engineer to negotiate two different contracts, both JPAs, Contract C0011463 with the cities of Andover and Anoka, and Contract C0011464 with the city of Andover. Additionally, I would like to announce that there is a open house this evening for the BNSF Railway Bridge that spans over those 26 flights of rail. Very informative evening, tonight, March 25th, at Fridley City Hall. From 4:30 to 6:30, I invite anyone and everyone to attend, not just necessarily in Commissioner Meisner's district, but this is a huge project that will impact all the surrounding communities. So with that, Mr. Chair, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move, yes, Commissioner Bastad, sir.
If I could just put a plug in for another open house that's happening this coming Thursday, March 27th. There is a public open house for the Highway 65 Bunker Lake Boulevard intersection and proposed improvements. That's going to take place this Thursday, March 27th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Church of St. Paul's. So thank you for that.
Yep, thank you. Okay. We'll move down to our added item, the Management Committee, and Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Committee of the Whole, we met for Management Committee just this morning at 8:15. I have several items before us. A through E will be all union contracts within law enforcement. So the first one for Action Item A is Resolution 2025-M4. This is with the law enforcement and representing the license and detention supervisor units. This is, these are actually all three-year contracts from 2025 through 2027. My personal opinion is that I really am in favor of three-year contracts for stability. Number B, or excuse me, letter B, is Resolution 2025-M5. This is also for law enforcement and representing the licensed deputy unit, also for a three-year contract. Letter C, Resolution 2025-M6. This is representing the licensed detectives, also for a three-year contract. Letter D is Resolution 2025-M7. This is representing the licensed sergeant, sergeants, excuse me, also for three years. And the last union contract of this slate is Resolution 2025-M8, representing the detention deputies. This is about two-thirds of our union contracts, so we're almost there. We are expecting three more union contracts, also living within law enforcement in the next couple of months. I do want to also just thank all involved for getting these negotiated. I know that it takes a lot of time and skill to do that. And then before I move these to, just, it was a really great conversation in the Management Committee, a lot of good questions asked about some detailed finances. And then also, the department did share that before we had adjusted all of the wage corrections, this is department-wide, but this is now just speaking about law enforcement, there was 13 open positions back in 2023. It was extremely challenging to keep everybody fully staffed, and we lost a lot, actually not to counties, but throughout the metro, to cities, mostly, almost, almost 99% was for wage issues. Today, it was reported that they are fully staffed, and those issues for wage adjustments no longer exist. Again, Anoka County's position is that we remain competitive in wage. We don't have to be the top-paying employer, but obviously, we want to keep up and make sure that we're not being recruited or recruited from by, by other entities. So with that last commentary, I will go ahead and move A through E, which are all the union contracts, and then I have one last item that I'll talk about separately.
We have a motion by Commissioner Meisner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Heinrich. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Bastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item F.
Yes, Item F is authorizing the county attorney's office and risk management to enter into settlement agreement for Claim Number 24-00, or excuse me, -081, in the amount as discussed by risk management and the county attorney's office.
So moved.
Been moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Jepson. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Bastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. We'll move down to item number eight, which is to consider approving the following related to appropriations for the 2025 Memorial Day Observances. Appropriating pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 375.35, $200 to each post of a recognized military service person's organization or society organized and existing in the county holding charter from Congress or incorporated in the state for defraying the expenses of Memorial Day exercises, which submits a written request to the county administration by December 31st, 2025. Item B is reimbursing pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 375.34, expenses up to $200 to any military service person's organization or society holding charter from Congress or incorporated in the state which exists outside the county but holds Memorial Day services in the county, not to exceed a total reimbursement of $1,000, and which submits a statement in writing by December 31st, 2025 detailing the expenses incurred in such services. And item C, appropriating pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 375.34, up to $2,500 to the Anoka County Veterans Council to aid in the observance of Memorial Day. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brast, excuse me, Commissioner Reiner, and seconded by Commissioner Brastad. Commissioner Reiner, you had a comment?
Yeah, actually, why don't we get this done first, and we'll just take a vote on this, and then I'd like to add something.
Okay.
In this genre.
All right, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Commissioner, Commissioner Reiner.
Yeah, and this is something we probably should have prepared for resolution prior to now, but it is National Medal of Honor Day today, and that is to honor those that have received this medal in valor. This, I think is the 35th Medal of Honor, National Medal of Honor Day. It was first established in 1990, and the date marks the anniversary of the first Medal of Honor presentations in 1863, no doubt from some valor during the Civil War, and serves as a reminder of the impact these individuals have had on history and the values they represent. So hats off to all the Medal of Honor winners, and we owe a lot to your bravery.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Reiner, for that. We'll move down to item number nine, which is committee appointments. Consider reappointing Ben Thomas, representing hospitals and clinics, to the Emergency Services Council for a term ending December 31st, 2027. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Been moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jepson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, it's approved. Item B, consider appointing Asante Rabi, consumer, to the Adult Mental Health Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending March 31st, 2028. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Jepson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Any questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item C, consider appointing Zachariah Isaac, representing District 3, to the Community Health Advisory Committee for a term ending December 31st, 2027. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Heinrich. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brastad. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item D, consider reappointing the following to the Community Corrections Advisory Board. First one, Liz Hallberg as public defender's representative for a two-year term ending April 2027, and Thomas Kinney, representing District Number 3, for a two-year term ending May 2027. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Reiner, and seconded by Commissioner Schulte. And Commissioner Meisner, thank you.
Well, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a quick correction, because you said Liz, but it's actually Lisa Hallberg.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. But actually, that's who I wanted to comment, just, just to kind of lift this up. So Lisa is a public defender, so, and she happens to be chair of this committee as well, which is unusual, but this is, this is a good thing. So I did just want to point that out because it's, like I said, very unique to have that particular position, so engaged in this committee, and that perspective really helps the, the work at large. Thank you.
Yep, nope. I apologize to Lisa for calling her Liz. I'll check the tape. No, I believe you. So we got that. So, any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We'll move down to item 10, which is for informational purposes, or a summary of the March 11th, 2025 Performance Evaluation of the County Administrator. And I do believe I received an email on this to tell me what I was supposed to say right now, but I can't, I can't, I can't find it. So, what I will say is this, is that we did it, we did the performance evaluation for the new county administrator. We still call him new, but he's been here now for six months.
Yes.
And it went very, very well. We think, we think, you know, Jim is meeting most expectations that we have, so we're very happy about that. It has been a nice six months to get reacquainted with my old friend, so I appreciate that, and I'm going to open it up to any other comments that are from the board, but Commissioner Meisner, I'll have you go ahead first.
Oh, yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I mean, yes, thank you. It has been a great six months. I've noticed a huge difference professionally, and so I'm very grateful for that. But I actually was just going to just say too, so this is a six-month review, which is, I think, customary for brand-new administrators, but we'll be conducting then the usual annual review, and then from there, doing an annual review going forward. So I just wanted to mention that for, for process purposes.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Chair? Commissioner Heinrich.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank our administrator. He's, he got here in September, and then I got here in November. But because of his years of service at City of Andover, I think he's been very helpful. I don't have a prior experience with administrators, so he's my first county administrator that I've experienced, but certainly wanted to thank him for his work and his helpfulness. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Reiner.
Don't be nervous. So, yeah, mostly for the six-month review, you've met expectations. I think, though, the expectations were high on you getting here, and so I think things are going well, and your administration skills are a breath of fresh air for the county. Thank you for being here.
Anyone else? I'm still trying to find this email, and I don't know what I did with that. I apologize. Anybody? Okay, well, Jim, again, it's been
We're good.
...a good six months, and then, like I said, Commissioner Meisner mentioned that we will be back in six months, and we'll do it on a yearly basis after that. I think that's the way we'll go about it, so.
I think for information, yeah, I'm still here, so, from that standpoint, and it's favorable review from my perspective, so look forward to another six months, and here we go.
Excellent. So, that's the last item on our agenda. If there's nothing else to come before the county board this morning, we are adjourned. Our public comment period.